Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Bay.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Here.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Carney. Jim, is Counselor Carney on the meeting?
I'm here.
I think I heard him say yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Here.
Counselor Majoke.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor Driscoll.
Here.
All present men present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May twenty-fourth meeting?
So.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Is that a yes, Counselor Carney?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now. Okay. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
The minutes of the May tenth meeting have been approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Are there any petitions?
No, Madam President.
Are there any committee reports? Are there any communications?
Yes, Madam President, I have a communication from the animal Benjamin R. Walsh, Mayor of the City of Syracuse, a veto and a veto message for ordinances one eighty-eight and one eighty-nine of the May tenth meeting for the budget amendments regarding the downtown mural project.
Thank you. I have item nine, and I do not have any date, so I will be withdrawing that. Counselor Bay.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items number ten through seventeen. Items ten, eleven, and twelve are held. Items thirteen through seventeen are ready. I'd like to introduce some others for adoption.
Thank you. Item ten and eleven are being held. Item twelve.
Twelve is also being held, Madam President.
Okay, sorry about that. And item twelve is being held. Item thirteen, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item fourteen, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fourteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item fifteen, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fifteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item sixteen, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item sixteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item seventeen, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item seventeen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Hey, Madam President, I have item eighteen through twenty-five. I'd like to introduce them and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item eighteen, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua. Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item eighteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item nineteen, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Item nineteen, Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item nineteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item twenty-one, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-two, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Is that a yes, Counselor Carney?
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Twenty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-three, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-four, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-five, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Counselor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items six through two. Three is going to be held. All other items are ready. I'd like to introduce them and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item twenty-six. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-seven, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is approved by unanimous vote.
Item thirty, are there any objections?
I think we missed twenty-nine.
Oh, you're right, twenty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-one, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Is that a yes, Counselor Carney?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-two, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Carney, yes. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Thirty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thirty-three is being held. Item thirty-four, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yeah.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-five, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-six, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-seven, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item thirty-eight, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-eight is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-nine, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-one, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-two, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White. Sorry, was that a yes, Counselor White? Jim, is Counselor White on the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Carney.
I heard him say yes.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
I thank you, President Hudson. I have items forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. And I'd like to reduce them and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item forty-three, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-four. Are there any objections? Discussion. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item forty-five. Are there any objections? Discussion. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Uh, President Hudson, could I interrupt for a second? I might have to leave this meeting. Uh, I just got a text that the house across the street is being broken into. They want me to look into it. So, uh...
Okay, yours are done.
Yes, thank you.
All righty. Counselor Majoke.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine, and forty-nine and fifty. Uh, item forty-six is being held. The rest of the item are ready. I'm urging, I'm introducing them and urging for adoption.
Item forty-six is being held. Item forty-seven. Are there any objections? Discussion. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. I couldn't hear you.
Can you now?
Yeah, no. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-seven is adopted by a unanimous vote of eight to zero. Counselor Hogan. Absent.
Item forty-eight. Are there any objections? Discussion. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item forty-eight is adopted by a vote of eight to nothing. Counselor Hogan absent.
Item forty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua. I'm sorry, Counsel Peni, I couldn't hear you.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.